...by discussing the future direction of work along with recommendations that the district and buildings are considering. But before moving forward with our presentation, while there is always room for improvement, we truly believe that our data paints a very positive picture for Indian Prairie. Our community sends to our schools amazing students who are focused on learning and taking advantage of the opportunities afforded to them by Indian Prairie and by the cities of Naperville, Aurora, Plainfield, and Bowling Brook. Our teachers and administrators work diligently to build positive relationships with students, provide positive structured environments for all students, and are focused on continual improvement. Laura, Nicole, and I are very fortunate to work with outstanding educators and administrators in this work. Board Policy 7190, in addition to the items listed on the slide, this policy states, "The superintendent with input from the parent teacher advisory committee shall prepare disciplinary rules implementing the district's disciplinary policies. These disciplinary rules shall be presented annually to the board for its review and approval." The committee met on March 7th of 2024, and the board did approve the code of conduct at the April 8th board meeting. In Policy 7200, a review of suspensions is to be provided to the board. This report was provided to the board on July 26th by Mr. Brandell. Tonight's presentation is a supplemental presentation of that data as it relates to the objectives outlined in this policy. Board Policy 7190 has goals and objectives there listed here, "To ensure the safety and dignity of students, maintain a positive weapons-free and drug-free learning environment, keep school property and the property of others secure, address the causes of students' misbehavior, and to teach students positive behavioral skills to become independent and self-disciplined citizens in the school, community, and society." Tonight, we're going to address those objectives and how we have progressed for the 2324 In the 2223 school year, we were able to, or the 2324 school year, we were able to do a lot of different things that we were looking to get done. And what we had up there is we wanted to do restorative practices training, we wanted to continue and enhance that. This training was focused on relationships, defining them, developing them, refining them, and then using them as a powerful tool for student belonging and to increase their participation in school and in the classroom. The training also focused on practices for when a relationship is in need of repair. We actually had three presentations, three full days of presentations during the 2324 school year for all, for staff to participate in. We also increased our focus on victims' rights and protections, increasing social work resources and services at the building level for students through the threat assessment process, and also the bullying reporting process. Tracking of proactive interventions and efforts, this is something that we still have quite a bit more work to do. As we are working on our IMTSS process, you'll hear a little bit more about that and the integration of that tracking. And then finally, we've also been working to continue data analysis to identify and reduce disparities. We do have some additional work that we need to do in that area, and then we'll continue development of other Tier 2 interventions as well. This graph represents the past three years of out-of-school data compared to our baseline data, or baseline year of 2010. In the 2324 school year, a total of 567 students out of 25,952 experienced an out-of-the-school suspension. This does represent a 2.2, this represents 2.2 of the total student population. It was 1.8 the previous year. As you can see, the increase occurred across student groups, but it did not occur equally across all grade levels. The largest shift upwards occurred at grades five and grade eight, while the largest decreases occurred at grades one, four, and seven. We are not pleased with the increase, but we are cognizant of the fact that the suspension rates are extremely low, and our progress towards achieving the goals of Board Policy 7190 is extremely strong. Our focus on implementing the practices that I just discussed previously, and you will be hearing more about in the future, in the next parts of the presentation, allow us to be responsible, responsive to individual needs of students is our continued focus.
Good evening. Okay, I'm gonna, oh, this is great. I'm gonna spend some time and talk about the first goal of ensuring the safety and dignity of students and staff. And this is a big one, because when we refer to school climate, or you hear people talk about climate, they're often talking about some of the characteristics that fall underneath this category, right? How safe does the school feel? Do the students feel supported? Do they feel like they belong? All of that's a part of the safety and dignity of the students and staff. And so a large part of ensuring that safety and dignity are our prevention and our mitigation strategies. So there's two parts of that camp. It's educating the adults on how to model those behaviors and how to respond to them when misbehavior occurs, and it's also about educating our students, making sure they understand what the expected behaviors are, and then providing replacement behaviors if they don't have the skills to, say, resolve conflicts successfully. When students, and when we notice and identify students who are having issues in this area, we try to connect them right away to SCL and mental health supports, because often there's an underlying issue, when, especially when you're talking about some of the infractions in this category like violence, which covers all physical altercations, any sexual misconduct, and other safety violations. And we try to have students learn how to cope and how to deal with some of those behaviors. So it's kind of an ongoing practice. I would love to say that one, it's a one and done. You know, you have one conversation and then they never do it again, but it's never really quite that simple when we're talking about infractions in this category. So it's really important that our adults are equipped with the skills to help successfully transition our students to more successful behaviors. So we have safety care training that our staff goes through. We also have positive behavior intervention and supports that we're trying to do a reboot of this year across all of our schools, because we want to ensure that we have the best possible training and the best practices and thinking of our current time to help address some of the issues that we're seeing. And they're becoming a little more pervasive as we just talked about, especially at some of the younger grades. So this particular slide shows us kind of the clustering of those in-school and out-of-school dispositions that were given as a result of those infractions, the ones that violate the safety of our environment. So as you can see, we saw a slight decrease in these exclusionary discipline, dispositions at the high school level, we saw a slight increase at the middle school level, and the elementary level was about the same. And that's because of what Brad sort of mentioned, where some grades went significantly down while fifth grade went up a little bit. But overall, 98% of our students did not engage in any safety-related infractions during last school year. Laura, you want to take the next part?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm going to talk about safety, but more specifically focused on the dignity of students and staff. I'm going to actually just start with some of the examples of infractions that would fall under the dignity category. Those would include things like disrespect, and again, these could be both student-to-student or student-to-staff, slurs, disorderly conduct, reckless conduct, insubordination, gross insubordination, and profanity. Some of the prevention and mitigation strategies we use, Nicole just talked about positive behavior intervention and supports, and I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, but I wanted to highlight more the restorative practices. I know that there's been a lot of conversation about restorative practices, and you see it in our presentation over and over, but I also know that our board had a special meeting last week to talk about restorative practices. And I wanted to just highlight some of the information that is also being shared with our staff, again, in that effort to make sure that we're all on the same page in supporting students. So just to give a little bit of an overview, and some of my favorite pieces from that presentation last week is just talking about, in general, what are restorative practices. And it really is actually an approach or a set of guiding principles for our entire school community. And that's where it really sees relationships as central to learning, growth, and an inclusive, respectful school culture. You know this fits perfectly with 204 because of our equity and statement, and how important school culture and inclusion is for all of us. It really is that shift, though, from that traditional rule-based punitive discipline system, because those restorative practices focus on building, maintaining, and when necessary, repairing relationships among members of the community. It also provides that pathway for equitable discipline and support. So I think part of that paradigm shift is going from punishment, right, to thinking more about consequences and learning opportunities. And that support and consequence have to be paired together for students to really learn from the experience. And as Nicole pointed out, gosh, it'd be great if it just took one time for kids to learn it, but for some kids, developing those skills definitely takes longer. And really what the restorative practices do is enrich the toolkit for our teachers, for our educators, in maintaining that safe and orderly environment. And I do want to be clear that they don't replace other tools, including disciplinary tools. But the result is that suspension and expulsion rates have the potential to drop significantly as other accountability systems are grown. And as Brad shared, that was a huge piece of the restorative practices training that we offered three full days of last year for all of our administrators and their teams, but that we have a sustainability committee that's continuing to do that work. So I will just give a few highlights that address some of the misconceptions that might be out there in our community, and that, that could be staff, parents, students. But a lot of people might say, "Oh, restorative practices, there's just no accountability." Well, that's actually not true. There is accountability. Restorative practices take student accountability to a higher level, because students and teachers are engaged in collaborative conversations around choices, actions, and behaviors that can foster true personal growth and change, right? If you think about it traditionally, in the past, it would be a punishment. Okay, you don't get to do this, you don't get to do that. But there was never any skill development or opportunity to repair those relationships and learn how to do better. Another myth is kids can do whatever they want. Well, what we know is not all students come to school with all of the skills. Most children and youth mimic what they see modeled by adults, and if the adults in their lives, whether it's community, or home, or on TV, or on social media, all the places kids have access to, I need to be shorter, I think, have access to, then they don't have a good understanding of positive social and emotional behavior. So we can't expect students to come to school with those skills. We, as educators, need to teach behavior with the same commitment that we teach reading and math. And then the final one I'll share is students choose to misbehave. Actually, we know that behavior is a form of communication. Many students come to school having experienced trauma, adverse childhood experience, conflicts of all sorts, and a host of other things that impact their automatic reactions and self-protection mechanisms. We need to address trauma and recognize how students present these experiences to educators. So again, our goal is really to teach children reading, math, and how to manage their emotions so they can be successful in school and also in life. So let's take a look at the data. In terms of safety and dignity, as Nicole mentioned, over 98% of our students met the behavior expectations for ensuring the dignity of students and staff. We do consequence according to the code of conduct, and that's for the less than 2% of students who did not. And as you've heard, there's a variety of ways that our administrators are very thoughtful in looking at what happened and what students need to be able to grow, learn, and do better.
Next is Goal 2, "Maintain a positive weapons-free and drug-free learning environment." And we look at both of these sets of data separately for 2324. Weapons, you see that there is very little that is taking place within our buildings for this, so that's, that's excellent. And the same thing with maintaining a drug-free environment, we do quite well there. In Goal 3, "Keep school property and property of others safe." Again, you notice that the numbers are quite high with the number of students making great choices associated with this. Well over 99% are making great choices when it comes to being safe with the property of others and keeping their hands to their own property.
Goal 4, "Address the causes of a student's misbehavior." And this is where our faculty spend a lot of time. At the high school level, deans, counselors, social workers, at the lower levels, principals, other staff and personnel. And I'll sort of take you through an example, because I think that'll help sort of solidify and contextualize, like, what this work looks like. So let's imagine a fight, and let's say it's a fight with, and typically fights are at least two students, right? But more often, three or four are involved, and sometimes five or six. So let's just talk about five or six students. And we want to address the cause of that behavior. So we know the incident was a fight, but what was the underlying cause for each of those students to participate in that fight? What we found are the reasons can be different for the different students, and we have to address those accordingly. So there could be, say, an environmental issue for one. They're having issues at home, or they're just upset at something that happened within the community, and they bring that anger in with them, and they just happen to have, be friends with Laura, and Laura's about to fight, so I don't care about today, I'm going to fight too. So their reason had nothing to do with that conflict per se, but they were just having a really bad day in their end. It could be just pure influence. She's fighting, and I'm her friend, so I'm going to fight with her, even though her reason for doing it could be totally different. Educational challenges, the real reason Laura is fighting is because she's failing two classes, and it's really, really hard for her, and she doesn't know what else to do, and she hates going to those classes, and so she's just misbehaving and sort of lashing out that way. It could be emotional issues for some, right? Some type of dependency on pieces. And then I think another part of it is sometimes just that misalignment between what the school expects and what social media or what happens outside of school thinks is appropriate. And so students will sometimes lean toward that as opposed to what the school expects. And so we have to address each of those differently, right? Because for some, we may point them toward reset, because if they were truly a part of the conflict that caused the fight, they have to work that out. Some may need to go into another hospitalization if they're having other mental health issues or SCL issues, or we may have parent meetings and bring parents in if students are communicating that there's some concerns at home. So that team could clock countless hours on sort of working with those individual students involved in that infraction. So it's not just every, all six of you had a fight, and so you have three days out-of-school suspension, and that's done. There's a lot of work that goes into that. And so the intervention piece and the prevention piece is really important, and involving parents, because every time a student is excluded in an out-of-school, there's a parent meeting in order for that student to re-enter. And during that parent meeting is when they really get underneath some of those causes and what we hope to happen going forward. Okay? You can go to the next one? That's okay. And so when we're looking at the misbehavior, one way for us to gauge if we're being successful in addressing those causes is looking at the rate of recidivism. How many of those students repeat a similar or the same behavior? And as you can see, the rate is relatively small, but we would love it to be zero. Let me go down to this next slide myself here. So I have my actual numbers here. So as far as recidivism, it's less than 1% in our elementary students, which is fantastic. At the middle school level, it was about 7% incurred a subsequent suspension, and at high school, about 5%. We would love to see all of those numbers shrink down to about less than 1% like at elementary, and like I mentioned, it is a work in progress. And what we have seen as students, especially across the high school level, as they matriculate, they get smarter about their choices. So we see more out-of-school suspensions at the freshman level and very few by senior year. So there is some learning and maturing that's taking place, you know, across that as students sort of get older. And we would love to see more of that happening earlier, right? We would love to see them come in, make that transition, and never have a repeat. Don't know if it's possible, don't know if anyone across the country has figured that out, but that is something we continue to work toward.
All right. Thank you. Now we're going to talk a little bit about our tiered systems of support for our students, which kind of echoes some of the information that I shared with you a little bit earlier. If you start at the bottom on the green, those are universal systems of support. Those are for all students. Examples include our SCL curriculum, differentiation of instruction, morning meetings. But really, the most important part, and what we focus so much on through restorative practices, but just also good practice in general, is those strong relationships. In the words of Rita Pearson, if you haven't seen her TED Talk, it's one of my all-time favorites, but she says, she was a longtime teacher, she says, "Kids don't learn from people they don't like." And so our teachers work hard to get to know our students and to earn their respect, and still be firm and set clear expectations, but also to be kind. We call that being a warm demander, that they do set those high expectations, but also let kids know they believe in them and that they are there to support them and help them achieve their goals. The other strength, as I talked about, are those clear expectations that are universal, so at all of our levels, students know exactly what to expect. We are going to be doing more work, as Dr. Howard mentioned, with PBIS this year. Brian Meyer has been consulting with us last year as part of our work on the MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. PBIS has always been an MTSS system, but they're really going to take us back to looking at our practices. They've made some enhancements that are going to give us the opportunity to make some of our own within our system. As you can see from the visual, when Tier 1 supports are not enough, that is for a smaller percent of students, our collaborative problem-solving increases and the intensity, the intensity of the intervention increases, and the continuous parent involvement is throughout the process. We know that those things make a difference for our students. You can see just a couple of bullet points that list some of the things that we do, but again, it's getting to know that student and what they need to be successful, and that's what's provided through those Tier 2 targeted supports. And then our Tier 3, those are our most intensive supports, and they are utilized when the student has not responded to Tier 1 and Tier 2 interventions. Again, there's a variety of supports that can be provided, from change of environment, sometimes it's just too overwhelming and too stimulating. So what are the things that that student needs to be successful? Goal 5 is to teach students positive behavioral skills to become independent, self-disciplined citizens in the school, community, and society. We've already talked about PBIS, CHAMP, social-emotional learning. I think the key one I want to highlight now is just our partnership with outside agencies. Two of the things that have really been meaningful are our partnership with Youth 360 Services and bringing in outside counseling to our schools. We know that our students value being embraced by our community in so many ways. We were fortunate enough to have a breakfast with Youth 360's Services last week, the week before, but they've brought on some new things. For example, we weren't all aware, I wasn't, of some of the help that they can provide in terms of housing insecurity or food insecurity for students and their families, but they also are offering group counseling. In the past, they've done one-on-one, but they have seen the patterns of needs of students and have developed three different core groups that will be able to address those specific needs for students in a group setting, which we think was another benefit to all of our
So where is it that we're heading for the 2425 school year? You may think that we made a mistake and that we simply duplicated a slide that we had shown you previously. The reality is, is that this is the work, and it is to continue moving forward with each of these ideas and to have schools become better at them and to increase their toolbox. For example, when it comes to restorative practices training, continued and enhanced, what does that mean? We have district-certified restorative practices trainers that have put together modules that our school improvement teams at each building will have access to. And there are seven of those that they will be able to utilize in their school improvement plan days, in their, in their early morning Wednesday meeting with staff, to be able to better have conversations around building relationships, restoring broken relationships, how is it that we're going to address this in the classroom instead of emailing or sending a referral to the administrator to deal with outside of the classroom and not really impact, not really addressing the impact that the negative behavior had with inside the room on those who are looking at it, which again, goes back to this idea of victim rights and protections. So all of these things that are there, we're not finished, we're not done, we're constantly evolving and being able to address the needs of the students that we have sitting in front of us. And we think we do a very good job of that. Are there days where we wish we had done better? Of course. But we think we do a very good job of that day in and day out, and we're always looking to continue and grow. And with that, I'll turn it over to you for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I'll start with Ms. Jane.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to start with Slide 8. And I appreciate Dr. Tally's beginning statement, because it is true, we should not overlook the green. Those numbers are amazing and wonderful, but we're always striving to be better, right? And so hence the discussion around the other colors. And my eyes go to middle school and the increase to 5%. So it's not so much that number per se, but just an overall discussion of, we're implementing restorative practices, we're seeing the effect on decrease in repeat suspensions, which Dr. Howard touched on. So how do we explain this? Is it that restorative practices take longer time for us to understand, you know, for, for the outcomes that we hope will result from those practices, or could you speak to that?
Yes. One of the things that we know about middle school students is that the, the best thing about them, and the thing that I often say about them, is that they are consistently inconsistent. One day is not the same as the next day with a middle school student. If you've had one in your home or have one now, you're probably experiencing that very same thing. And so what we have seen is that we do have some students who are coming into the building dysregulated from things that have happened in the evening. And by evening, what I'm referring to is we have students who come in on the weekend, and on Monday, and who are unhappy about a social media event that took place during the, during the weekend. We do our best to teach students how to respond and what good social media activity looks like and what negative social media activity looks like, but in the moment, I think it is still sometimes more difficult for a middle school adolescent child's brain to wrap their head around, "What I'm about to do is going to cause me and everybody else stress and drama." And so our middle school students struggle with that. If there is one thing, that if I had one magic power, it would truly be that I would end all cellphone communication outside of a foot phone for anybody under the age of 16. That would be my platform. I would love to see that, because that really is one of the bigger impacts that we have. And you don't see that quite as much at elementary because of the lack of phones, and at high school, because finally, students are wrapping their heads around the fact, "I don't want the drama associated with this, I don't need this, this is not what I am here for, this is not how I want to live my life." Where middle school students are still struggling with that, and sometimes they need to learn that lesson, unfortunately, by living it.
So there's nothing particular that happened from 2223 to 2324, but if we were to take, like, a longitudinal study, we would see probably this.
I think we're going to see some blips, because when we look at the year to, the grade level data of 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, I think 6th grade and 7th grade showed between a 2% and 5% decrease in the overall number of suspensions, while our 8th graders had an increase of 14%. So when you're looking at that and you're looking at groups of students, one of two things, you could make a generalization about that particular 8th grade group of kids. I really don't like doing that, but I think you could also simply say that it was just feeling empowered and wanting to see what that looks like, and then making some poor choices and having to live with those. And that's the other thing about restorative practices, is that there is understanding the im- understanding the impact that you had on another human being, and what your words, what your choices, what your actions did to another person. And sometimes that consequence is simply having to face that particular person and apologize. But sometimes that action is so egregious that it does require a removal from school for a period of time. In that report that we provided to you, that Mr. Sprandell provided to you in July, you'll notice, when you start looking at each of the infractions and how long somebody was suspended for, you'll notice that there's a lot of .4 of a day, .5 of a day, .6 of a day, .8 of a day, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4. And that's because we truly are trying to use the smallest amount of exclusionary discipline to make the point that we needed to, and also to provide a little bit of balance to the building, and a little bit of regathering. You don't see a lot of 5, 6, 7, 8, 10-day suspensions in that particular group, because that's not what we're doing. Unfortunately, this particular data is simply counting a suspension as a suspension, whether it was .4 of a day, or 1.2 of a day, or 7 days. So, that's one of the kind of misleading pieces of this data.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think it also speaks to the accountability part of it, that there's still accountability, whether that's a .4 or whatever that amount is. Okay, thank you so much.
Can I add one more piece to that? I just want to make sure that we're not confusing the percent of students with the actual number of incidents. Because this tends to lend itself to group think, there are multiple students involved, and so, some of that increase isn't necessarily they had more fights, significantly more fights in 8th grade, they just had more students involved in the fights that they had. Because I'm thinking back, and I don't want to speak off, but I remember looking at the 6th grade versus 8th grade. I don't know that they had significantly more number at 8th grade, just more students involved. So, some of that is just larger, more involved.
Which does go back again to a small device in everyone's pocket that does allow you to communicate with more than one person at a time, as opposed to the old telephone that I grew up on, that it would take me an hour, and my mother would finally catch on to the fact that I was calling a bunch of different people and having stress. So, yes, I'm old.
Ms. Guns.
Thank you. I think we all had the landline issues up here too, Brad. So, but thank you guys so much. It was honestly a pleasure hearing about restorative practices, you know, last week as well. And Dr. Najjar had touched on something that Mr. Hillman made a point about as well, where just the impact that, you know, these relationships that you're establishing by doing this can have on a child you may not even see, but it will be impactful, you know, as they move on to high school, let's say, or, you know, college or such. So, I found that so heartening. And honestly, on Slide 14, I love to see that decrease from, you know, people that were suspended once, but then, you know, not suspended again. So, I like to think that shows that some of these new things are working. My only question, honestly, was, you talk about communication a lot, which I think is great, because I know parents are very concerned with, obviously rightly so, how much, you know, they're communicated to about what is going on with their children. We didn't really touch on the victims or whoever was affected. If there was just one, you know, that was affected by it, bullying, or whatever the case may be. Are parents communicated with, as far as that goes, to like saying the parent, you know, the student's coming back from suspension, and they're going to be having a meetup? Will the victim's parents be there as well? Is it something that's discussed with them?
So, when it comes to the bullying response, according to state law, we do have to notify both sets of parents that there was something associated that would be considered bullying. And then, we do also have to issue a finding to notice to both parents as to whether or not we agree that there was an event of bullying or there wasn't. We do communicate with families as to the steps that we're going to be taking with their student, and we also give them some choices. There are some families who want nothing to do with their students seeing a social worker or a psychologist. And obviously, we just simply make that available to them, and they can choose to participate or not. As far as coming together and bringing parents of the victim, and also potentially the person who was the offender, that is generally not something that we encourage, simply because it causes everybody's defenses to go up just a little bit. Even if you are, I like to say that my mother did not really support me a whole lot when it came to the school. She would say that the school was right, I was wrong, that's all there was to it. But I could still see my mother being very protective if she were in that particular environment. And so, we do try to avoid that. But we do let families know, not so much the length of the discipline event, because that's not part of a student record that we are able to share with somebody else's parent. But we do let them know what resources they can seek out if, when the person is there, if there are problems.
Okay.
So, we talk about next steps for them. So, that way, if I'm having a problem with Laura, and I see that Laura is back today, and I'm uncomfortable with her presence, who is it that I can go and have a conversation with to make sure that I feel at ease and welcome still within the classroom?
Okay.
And the same thing for Laura. Laura may be back in the classroom and be have some embarrassment or some frustration over what took place, and how is it that she is going to integrate into the classroom, and who can she talk to about that if she feels that everybody's staring at her and knows what, you know, she did, or what consequences were? How does she seek out resources for that as well?
Okay, great. Always keeping, I know, comfort and safety in mind. So, thank you guys so much for the presentation again.
Mr. Carrubus.
I want to build on that question a little bit. On Slide 4, the victims' rights and protections. Is that on Slide 4?
I think it's the next one. Keep going forward.
5, missed it. So, I mean, we've talked about it generally, you've alluded to it. Just tell me more about the victims' rights and protections. Oftentimes, when we are presented with student behaviors, we don't hear so much about the people that were impacted. And maybe talk about it generally, but then also, like in a specific context. An individual is disciplined, they have the out-of-school suspension, and now they have to be reintroduced to the class. So, what is the impact, or how do we support the student that was impacted, and the teacher, and the classroom environment? So, generally, and maybe specific, please.
So, I can just simply speak to the middle school level. We have teams that are available. And so, the teams of teachers know that an event took place. They know that I did something that was inappropriate, and that I'll be out for three or four days. And they know, they get homework for me, they send me materials to make sure that I am being caught up with my lessons. But then, we also are going to be working with the victim to be able to say, "Okay, what does their classroom environment look like? How is it that we can best support that person in class? Do we need to make changes in the seating assignment? Do we need to make sure that they are no longer in groups together inside of a particular class? If the behavior was so egregious, do we need to consider moving another student out of that class? Generally, we offer that to the victim if they would like to move. But sometimes, we do also take the perpetrator, the offender, and move their class as well to be able to allow both of them to have a fresh start. And so, again, we're looking at what does this look like for both students and in their classroom environment? So, that's what we do at the middle school level. We also have guidance counselors who check in with students on a regular and consistent basis, so they'll add them to their particular caseload to be able to say, "I need to go have a conversation with Laura at lunch on the first day that Brad is back, and see what that looks like." Or they might have a small group that's going to be happening, and they pull them out to be a part of that on a regular basis. We do also try to touch base with all parents. Some parents appreciate the communication, some parents it will never be enough. But we do try to communicate with both sets of parents to be able to make sure that things are moving and progressing forward. One of the things that we have really tried to drive home at the middle school level is reaching out to parents on the day of, and really try to get that message about what transpired for both the person who's going to be receiving the consequence, but also for the person who is the victim, and what does that look like? And how can we assist their student when they come back? And some families, the simple, one simple conversation is enough. For others, you know, we might have to call four or five days in a row to be able to smooth things over. And that's just the reality.
At the elementary level, it's very similar to what Brad was just talking about. But I think in addition, if it's a really significant event, we know the impact that sometimes has on the entire class, because, right, we don't change classes like the middle school and the high school. It's usually right there in the classroom, or maybe at recess. And so, a lot of times, our principals and social worker and classroom teacher will do a community circle with students to process what happened, and to reassure them that school is a safe place. And then, for the victim, they'll actually work closely with them to understand what they're still maybe apprehensive, or anxious, or scared about, and really find a way to address those concerns, which, to Brad's point, sometimes that is changing classrooms, or changing seating assignments, or just making sure that the victim knows what the expectations are for all students, including the other student that didn't make the best choice.
Okay, at the high school level, it looks a little different, just because the students are older, and sometimes the stakes are a little bit higher in some of these interactions. And the majority of them don't happen in the classroom, fortunately. They're in passing periods, they're in the restrooms, they're on the field. So, for us, this more looks like, usually, it's either between friends who get into these conflicts, and because they're friends, when we're processing this with them, it's more likely that we're able to get them in the same room and have this discussion, whether it's through a formal peace circle or just conversations with the counselors, so that they can sort of have an agree on how we're going to engage each other going forward. So, we try to make that sort of collaborative between the parties. If we're in a situation where that's not possible, and that does happen, that's when we sort of seek out more formal protections, like we'll put in a contract in place that talks about movement of the students. You need to, your classes are over here, you move in this pattern, while this set of students or this person is going to move in that pattern, and you should not cross paths. Like, you're agreeing here at this table that you're not going to cross paths, because we haven't been able to resolve this, or the issue was so egregious that you need to be separated. Some of it, to get worked out with Reset, she's really good at bringing in parties who are in conflict to be able to work that out, and then have those contracts going forward with them. And then, sometimes the courts are involved. You know, we have official orders of protection, in which case, we enforce those according to the judge's orders. So, it just sort of looks different, depending on the level of severity and how many students are involved. But we really try to, our first default is to try to get the students to agree to coexist in the environment safely on some level.
Great. Also on this slide, it talks about tracking of proactive interventions and efforts. And I think, Brad, you mentioned it really quick in passing, and I didn't keep up with it. But what are we doing with the tracking?
That is definitely an area of growth for us. We are working with Rod Mack and his team about how to integrate this into synergy, so that way, we can begin pulling those types of restorative conferences or proactive interventions that we do, so people know that, you know, Laura and I are not in a great place. Bring us into the counselor's office, and we have an intervention that takes place before anything even negative happens. That's awesome. That's the best solution for everybody, right? But yet, we've never really kept track of that information. And so, we are working with Rod Mack and his team to be able to start documenting those, so that way, we can present to you the flip side of all of this, of why is it that we have counselors, why do we have deans, why do we have these other people who are with us? And what is it that they're doing, and what is their value to the child on an everyday basis?
Okay, going back to Slide 4, I finally figured myself out. This is the fidelity question, is that there's a lot of goals here, and we have a lot of moving parts. We have got a big district, a unit district, many schools. How do we ensure that just one of these areas is met with fidelity across the district? So, what is done at Wobanzie is the same thing that's done at Nequa, and the same thing that's on Admetia.
So, that's a little bit harder to do. We try our best to align our practices, and we do compare the data across, like I'll just use my level, we compare the data across the schools and have conversations about certain infractions and the dispositions given, and try to think through, like, "Well, why did you give that as part of your disposition?" "Oh, we typically do this." "Oh, I thought we had all agreed to do that." So, we have those conversations ongoing between our three buildings, and we try to get on the same page. But there's so many nuances to the infractions and the students' behavior, that the one thing we really try to be consistent on is addressing what those causes are. And so, the dispositions might sometimes look different, and the interventions might look different, but they're all geared toward helping students to heal and move on, and not commit that same infraction again. So, it's not a, and some people want this, it's not like a one-for-one grid, where if you are tardy, you're automatically getting a detention after school. If you are caught with drugs, you automatically get three days out. So, we don't have hard and rigid dispositions that way. But we do have them tiered, so that we know that within that tier, here are the interventions, and here are the dispositions that you can give. And then, we kind of have those conversations, and they have the conversation with me, especially if it's something a little more severe. And we talk through what seems most appropriate and fair, and what's going to be in the best interest of the school environment and that student. And so, some of that flows through me, which helps keep them all on the same page. But that is an area in which we continue to develop and grow. Dr. Tally.
Yeah, I just want to add something that you just said there, I think is very important. In a prior life of mine, when I supervised 40 schools, five high schools, nine middle schools, and 20-odd elementary schools, principals did not call me for their suspensions. Principals suspended, but as the community superintendent, they did not need to call me, they suspended. Here, very different. Dr. Howard was talking about, for example, she will talk with them about their suspensions, meaning, "I have a child, he or she has done X, how should I suspend?" I know that happens with Mr. Hillman and Ms. Rosenbloom as well. And that is where you have more of that consistency happening. The other thing, all three of them meet on a regular basis with their principals. At the high school level, Dr. Howard meets with all of her deans on a regular basis, talking about those issues. I know that Ms. Rosenbloom and Mr. Hillman also have the same conversations with their principals, and that's where you get to the proficiency of what's happening across all of the schools. With that all said, it is no way possible you will have exactly the same thing happening. But they are working in a way, such a way, to address that across all of the schools.
And finally, Slide 6. This is our infraction data. This is where we have, you know, some disparities in the suspensions based upon race. We have an obligation to not discriminate, to provide an equal treatment for all of our students regardless of race. And yet, we have an obligation to present this data by the state and the feds. So, I wanted to reassure that we are looking at this data and trying to see what, you know, maybe the difference is. But ultimately, we aren't discriminating. We aren't disciplining on the basis of race, and we are disciplining on the basis of behavior. Right?
Correct.
Right, that goes back to sort of the tiered conversation that we just sort of had. So, for instance, with this out-of-school suspension data, most of that comes from fighting, right? Fighting drug-related, but with fighting being probably the biggest cause of students being suspended. So, we're not suspending a particular student group, we're suspending that behavior, right? It's, that's, and that just happens to the behavior that tends to have multiple students involved. It's very different from, say, a drug infraction, which is typically just that student and the drugs that they're caught with, that one incident. One fight incident could be eight students. And with some of our smaller student groups, that's a large percent of that student group. So, and that's the unfortunate part of it, which is why we really have to hit home with our PBIS and those restorative practices, because the only way to really decrease that is to prevent it from happening in the first place.
Thanks.
Ms. Fazdak. I'll start with just a question that it didn't really come to me until Mr. Hillman was talking about it. On Slide 6 also, you mentioned that 2010 is our baseline data. Is that a fixed, like, moving reflective timeline of years? Like, it's every 15 years that keeps moving each year, or is that?
That just simply goes back and represents when the district was making a concerted effort to reduce the number of out-of-school suspensions and its reliance on exclusionary discipline. So, that just bench- So that just benchmarks that particular point in time. And that was a major effort that was started previously by Linda Reekstra, who was the assistant superintendent who oversaw secondary, meaning middle school and high school, along with, I think it was either Kathy Pease or Martha Baumann for elementary, about wanting to really reduce the amount of exclusionary discipline in keeping our kids in school. So that's just a contextual line that we provide.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to express my appreciation for a linguistic choice that I think is more important than just a linguistic choice. We all, I think, can agree that words matter, especially when we're talking about behavior. And that the, the negative connotation of a punishment can, for some of us, be very different than the more neutral connotation of perhaps a consequence. And removing a little bit of that connotation, I think, is really important as a door to open student growth. Because it focuses on the behavior and what is a natural perhaps consequence of the behavior, rather than a punitive form of perhaps blame. So I appreciate that it seems to be a very intentional choice to use consequences and learning opportunities. Because I think it focuses back on putting our students first. And as we learned about the restorative practices and the importance of relationships and belonging and how central that is to everything we do in the district, I, I really appreciate that specific choice to talk about it in those terms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rising.
Just on this slide really quick. When you go back to 2010, our white population was at 61% and now it's at 33%. So I think that's why you're seeing such a big drop in the white population. Or as far as discipline cases go, I know African-Americans, it's still higher than I would like it to be, but that student population is still maintaining 9% of our overall student population. So it's good that we're seeing a slight dip, but obviously I'd like to see that get lower. Slide nine, please. Thank you, Ms. Rosenbloom, for discussing and talking about restorative practices, what some of the rumors are, dispelling some of those. I misunderstood it for the longest time myself. And quite frankly, as a parent, I'm very much all about punishment. Like you, you do something wrong, you get in trouble. Like that, those are the consequences. My board was, I'm sure, not surprised to learn that I was often getting in trouble in school, as I shared with them. But here's the thing, you know, back then, it was much different than today. I mean, sometimes the kids, and what I see and what I hear is the kids look at, at out-of-school suspension almost as a, a reward. And what I can definitely tell you is we're not disciplining less because out-of-school suspensions are up, so let's just dispel that right away. But with restorative practices, it's my understanding, and please clarify this, that we're doing better with working with the students of creating a pathway for better behavior or benchmarks. But create a pathway for them going forward. Is that kind of what that, my understanding of restorative practices is?
Yes, that's correct. And to your point, right, when they're out of school, serving an out-of-school suspension, there's not really an opportunity for them to continue and learn and grow, not just academically, right? We provide the work, but also socially, emotionally. And to really resolve what was the cause, right, that they were suspended for. And so that's why whenever we can, we of course prefer doing things in school because then we have the services and the resources to support that student to be able to do better.
So are we trying to create those? Are we always creating those pathways, I guess, that's what I just like to call it? Are we creating those pathways for both out-of-school suspensions and in-school suspensions or different behaviors where the deans or the counselors or assistant principals are working with the students saying, hey, listen, you messed up, this is punishment. Now let's decide how we're going forward. And then there's check-ins and that type of thing. So that happens with all the discipline issues.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, slides 13. I think that was the, yeah. Was that the root cause and the? Okay. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Howard, for kind of going through how the different behaviors or the scenario you gave with the fight, which I loved. Trying to get the root cause of why the student or students were involved in that particular fight. And I'm glad to hear that we're involving the parents, because I heard you say that, involving the parents, have a parent meeting. Do we typically find a lot more success when those parents are engaged in the process of improving the behavior going forward? And can we, is there anything we can do to hold parents accountable for working with their students and working with administration? Do we try to, because I would imagine that there is a higher success rate of positive behavior going forward when you get parents that are involved, correct?
Absolutely. I mean, in fact, parents are sometimes the help to prevent the behaviors in the first place. They'll contact us and say, I think this is happening, can you talk to these students? So they're a really good frontline for us. And the more involved they are, the better it is for the students overall as well. We're very fortunate to have a very engaged and involved parent groups across all of our levels, I believe. And when we do contact them and ask them to come in, they'll take off work. Like they'll do whatever it takes, they'll come in and they'll have those conversations with us. And sometimes they don't know what to do because students can be difficult and they'll admit that. They'll say, I've tried everything, I don't know what else to do with this student. And when that happens, we do try to involve wraparound services and get more people involved and help support the family as a whole. But in general, the more involved they are, the better it is for the student. And the less severe, some of those infractions tend to be in the first place. It's, we do have some parents though who aren't able to participate, who don't want to come up. And then the schools get creative about trying to contact them via like a phone call or Zoom or try to work something else out to get them involved.
Okay. And then, you know, I, I guess I'll just echo what Mr. Carubus said and, and what Dr. Tally said is I appreciate us having some fidelity and consistency in discipline. And I've seen, I, I've seen that transpire, the consistency in making sure we have that because that's the last thing you want to have happen is you hear, you know, one kid got less punishment. But I also understand that, was this the first infraction? Was this the second infraction? So a fight, there may be a different level of punishment if that's not the first time, if that's the third time. So I understand that, but I'm glad we're getting and even fine tuning that more. Something that's related, because what I've seen is in the community with parents, with teachers, it's very difficult because we cannot, everybody wants to know what the punishment was. And I, and I want you guys to touch on this a little because it, it's a student privacy issue. And, and, and it's a family privacy issue. And I understand teachers want to know, I understand parents want to know, especially parents of victims that want to know. But there are certain laws that we have to follow. How are we best communicating with, especially the people that are directly involved in this? Either the teacher of a student in that class or a parent of a victim? Like are we doing the best job that we can communicating that? Because I know if I was a parent of a victim child, I would want to know that student at least received some type of punishment. But I don't know, if you wanted to touch on that just briefly.
So generally speaking, we, when we have these conversations, that is one of the first things that parents ask. We do tell them specifically that both Illinois and federal law do prohibit us from sharing confidential student record information about another person's child. The number of days that a student has been excluded from discipline fits with inside of that. We do also then tell them though that we are taking this very seriously. We explain the things that we are able to do for their child. And then we talk about the, the fact that we are contacting the other student's parents, we are working with the other student's parents and that we are going to be working with the team or the teachers that they have to be able to address the long-term concerns and being able to alleviate that. I would say nine out of 10 parents, they get it. There's the one out of 10 that definitely don't get it and takes them a little bit longer to, to wrap their head around it because they feel that they're entitled to that information because their child was negatively impacted. Unfortunately, that is simply not how the world is set up. Right or wrong? I'm, I'm not passing judgment on the, whether it's correct, whether it's right or whether it's wrong. That's just the reality.
And then just one last thing, just a kudos. You know, I, I recognize discipline for out-of-school suspensions necessarily isn't what we want it to be, but we're working on that as best as we can. But what I did notice at the high school level, I'll compliment our three high schools, our alternative high school, Dr. Howard. I noticed that with the small increase that we've seen in out-of-school suspensions, our in-school suspensions at the high school level are down from the 1819 school year to 2023, 24, they're down 60%. So with the small increase of out-of-school suspensions, but with a 60% decrease in in-school suspensions, we must be doing something right and good for the students, that they can make sure that they're being encouraging and positive and, and having good behavior and knowing how to act at the high school level. So I just wanted to throw out that kudos. Thanks.
Ms. Daming.
One of the things that struck me last week as we talked about restorative practices was the focus on relationships. And that's really what's helping me when I talk, when I think about restorative practices is. So I so appreciate talking about, and I may have it a little wrong, but a set of practices aligned with building, maintaining and repairing when necessary relationships within the district. And I think that anytime we can see students and teachers, but you know, our students have an opportunity to have at least a working relationship. You're not going to be best friends with everybody, but working a respectful relationship with your peers and educators, that just benefits everybody in the educational process. So that was one thing that really stuck out for me and that I really take away when I think about restorative practices is that relationship building. Can, slide 15, and I know there were a couple of different places, but can you help me a little bit, maybe with an example or a definition again on the, on PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention System? What, can someone help me with a little bit of what that looks like?
Sure. So it starts even at the tier one level and that's just making sure that all students know the expectations. So there are typically three things that the school selects. Be safe, be ready, be responsible. But again, those are evolving and becoming, I think, more inclusive and global for students too and collaborative. So that's part of why we want to invest in that work this year with PBIS. But then it also looks at how do we acknowledge kids? And it's really holding teachers accountable for acknowledging kids by giving them specific positive feedback and also that constructive feedback. But it really starts with making sure kids know, these are the expectations, right, at our school. And, and I think talking about those relationships, it's about being a community of learners. And you're right, that doesn't mean we have to be best friends, but we do have to be a community that can learn together and we do want kids to feel like they belong. So PBIS starts with those tier one foundations of the expectations and making sure we're providing that specific feedback. But then for the students that that's not enough for, then there are systems for tier two support. So one of them that's very recognized and has a great impact would be check-in, check-out. And so that's kind of that first level, making sure that kids are getting recognized and acknowledged every 30 to 45 minutes, like every period they're getting feedback. Because again, that helps hold teachers and educators accountable because sometimes, right, when kids are doing the right thing, you forget to notice it. And so this kind of forces them to make sure, oh, I did notice, look, I'm checking in and yes, you did a great job meeting the expectations, second period, third period, and so on. And then they have a lot of fidelity checks. I was thinking when Mr. Carubus was asking about fidelity. They have a lot of fidelity checks and that's something that we started working on last year just as a baseline to see where we're at. But also to identify within tier one, tier two and tier three in those positive behavioral interventions and support, where we're at and what we need next. And so again, that's part of why we'll be working with them throughout this year.
Okay. That helps a little, and I, you know, I see that, that, that helps just for a few, a few examples. And then the fidelity, Board Member Carubus brought it out. And I'm going to go back to slide six. This, I am very, I appreciate the conversation and the mention that we are trying to ensure that we're looking at what the behavior is and that that's what we're addressing because certainly the cultural differences is something that, that, that can jump out. But it's, as we talk about making sure that students are encouraged to think about the choices that they make and the behaviors and we try and have those interventions. Can you share a little bit, just for, we talked about it a little bit last week, but can you just share again, hear a little bit about how do we really help that entire teacher and, and building administrative side recognize and, and work on this with our students as well as maybe differences from a cultural standpoint?
So I think that's in two ways. One is through the restorative practices training we're doing, because you're right, it talks so much about those relationships. And our principals and our educators are learning new and more effective ways to build those relationships. But I know just, even when I was a principal, one of the most powerful things I did was I, I had a group of girls that were actually fighting a lot. And so we decided to start having lunch together once a week. And I, they happened to have been Hispanic and I learned so much about their culture and what was driving some of the decisions that they were making that really helped me understand where they were at and why they were having the feelings that they were having, which enabled me to better like know them and serve them and help change the ways that they were interacting to be more positive. Still resolve and keep their dignity because that was their goal was right, to, to have their dignity and not be disrespected by other people. So we were able to really work through that and talk about that. And that's what I really see our principals, our SSEs, our deans, working to do. And our teachers too, right? I mean, they're, they're there with the students every day. So I think the more that they learn about them and as Dr. Howard mentioned, some of the causes of the behavior, the better able we are to support them.
And we certainly know that, that our students face, we, many of us, you know, after 19, 20 and 21, face so many different things that are impeding us as we get ready and we enter on the classroom sometimes. So just wondered that, because in recognizing that our teachers and academic staff, you know, they're, they're trying to certainly do the best that they can and, and want that respect and respect all that they're doing. So thank you so much. The last thing was something that Member Rising indicated. And I think I have forgotten what it was.
Is it percentage?
No, it wasn't. Forgot what it was. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So thank you. I am very grateful for the training that our entire board went to last week. It was very interesting and helpful. It was a current topic. It was a current topic, because we knew we're getting this presentation tonight for us to understand more about restorative practices. And I think all of us came away with a better understanding of what that means and the impacts that that can produce. I appreciate Laura, your comments about misconceptions about restorative practices, because that often comes up in conversations with people when they hear those words. I did, on slide six, I know it was, come up a couple of times. I was worried when I saw this slide, because it kind of feeds some of those misconceptions, right? You look at it and you go, "Are they not punishing people anymore, because they started doing this restorative practice thing?" All the numbers went way down. And what we learn in restorative practices is that it doesn't replace consequences. You still have consequences for bad behavior, but there also is this aspect of learning and building relationships, like Ms. Dumming was talking about, and that that's critically important. So, I was worried that this is a slide up in our slide deck that somebody could grab and just use it to fuel that kind of conversation again. I appreciate Mr. Rising sharing the data of what 2010 looked like, the profile of our district, because that explains some of this. But I also still am a bit worried that it looks like something happened between 2010 and those three years that we highlighted, that somehow helped the white kids become much more, less suspended than in other populations. So, it's like just something to be concerned about with this chart, that I'll, I'll continue to worry. So, I, I do think that the idea of a relationship building is incredibly important, and it's something that I think causes students to reflect on how they're going to behave around other students. I, in the restorative practice training, I remember one of the discussions they had were that schools teach students how to do math, and they also come in and teach them how to do English language arts. But for some students, we also do need to teach them that the school is an environment that you behave a certain way in, that maybe outside of school, you have a very different environment that you live in. And so, it's important to also build that up in our students to understand, you know, how you relate to other people, how you relate to teachers, adults, et cetera, might be different than what you have been exposed to outside. So, I, I thought it was very insightful. I also greatly appreciate that ninety-five percent plus of our students are making good choices, and the repeat rate is so low. That's something to be, continue to be worked on and celebrated, and hopefully, we get to, like, like, less than one percent is repeat type of behavior. So, the other thing is, we discussed a restorative practice being ruled out within the district. So, we're still in the process of kind of evolving that in the district and building the capacity in our schools for this. So, it wasn't like in 2010, we didn't do it, and then all of a sudden, we did it, and now this is what our charts look like, right?
Correct.
So, all right.
Ms. Donahue? I will just close. I have the quote that you were referencing there, and you were spot-on.
Okay, say what it is, because it's probably a better phrase than what I did.
If a child can't read, we teach them to read. If a child can't do math problems, we teach them how to do math problems. If a child doesn't know how to behave, we discipline them? What if we taught them?
Yeah, that was, that was a great quote for me, because, you know, sometimes you live in your own bubble of what you grew up with or whatever, and it's certainly way different than most, you know, everybody has a different experience. So, I do appreciate hearing more about this, and I'm very thankful for your work and the results here. So, thank you. All right. Now, for legislative advocacy and Board of Education update, does anyone have any updates or comments? Nope? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.